Okay, Committee on Real Estate will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Counselor Kamara?
Here.
Counselor Dennis?
Here.
Counselor Mitchell?
Here.
Counselor Pullen?
Here.
Before we begin, I'd like to welcome Counselor Mitchell as a new addition to the committee. Welcome. Be a pleasure working with you. This evening, we have really one item or one school on the agenda. That is the Belile School. It's here before this committee for a couple of reasons. First, there was a resolution that was filed by Counselor Mitchell, Counselor Prer, and Counselor Mayoza, asking this committee to grant leave to withdraw all the six bids on a Belile School and start over again.
Is that motion acceptable?
Yep. One second, please, Counselor Mitchell. And obviously, the second item is basically the same thing, proposals received for the Belile School. But before we begin, I think for the listening audience and people watching, I just want to give a little background on the history of this school and this bidding process. The prior city council, before it was elected, before the new city council elected in January, the request for proposals went out on the Belile School, and we received six bids. After reviewing those bids, it was deemed that three were non-responsive due to an "as-is" clause that was in the request for proposals. So, three bids were given leave to withdraw at that meeting. After that was done, it was a 3-2 vote, which awarded the Belile School to the Northeastern Soccer Academy. That recommendation, both recommendations to grant leave to withdraw, the items that were non-responsive, and the awarding of the Belile School to the Northeastern Soccer Academy, and the other two bids that were responsive for single-family homes were also sent to the full council with no recommendation. We convened a meeting of the full council. We also had a meeting of the Neighborhood Association, where a large amount of residents attended that meeting and actually took not only comments from them, but they took a vote with regard to what they would like to see happen to the property. Based on that neighborhood meeting and based on comments in the public throughout that area, the city council requested that all six bids for the Belile School be brought back here before the Real Estate Committee to basically take a step back and maybe reflect on the desire of the neighborhood. So, that's what has occurred. We have a resolution before us asking to give leave to withdraw to all six bids. I have a motion from Counselor Mitchell. Before I ask for a second, does anyone else would like to comment on this issue? Counselor Pullen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did attend the neighborhood meeting, as I know, Mr. Chairman, that you did. I think there were 81 votes that were tallied, and the three options put before the group that was there to vote were the options for house lots by Mr. St. Pierre, option for house lots by Mr. Cifori, and the Norriston Soccer proposal. Of the 81 votes that were tallied, 25 of those that voted voted none of the above. 23 actually wrote in word "childcare," even though that was not submitted to them as an option. Another 18 voted for Norriston Soccer, and 15 voted for the house lots. So, actually, if you tally up those that did not vote for the house lots, it was about 66 out of the 81 voted against the house lots. Many of the comments that were made, the neighbors stated that they believed, many of the neighbors believed that the creation of additional house lots in that neighborhood would create a hardship for property owners in that neighborhood. In that regard, I had inquired from the Inspector General's office as to the legalities of withdrawing or throwing out all bids. Obviously, they could not advise whether or not we should or shouldn't do that, but they did send me a citation to case law, James Mangano versus Town of Wilmington. The Town of Wilmington had sought to sell property in accordance with provisions of Chapter of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B. And at the end of the day, the town decided to not sell the property and to reject all the bids. There was a developer in this case that was insistent that the town could not do that, that if they put a property out to bid, that they had to award it. So, he challenged them. It went to the highest court, I believe, and it came back that cities and towns do have the right to, they can't be required by any bidders to accept bids and to convey that property. So, the cities and towns do have the right to refuse to award property. So, the case law seems fairly clear, in my opinion. So, if it is the desire of this committee to not award at this time, I think that we do have the case law that would indicate that that's at our discretion to us to hang on to that property at this time. I also am concerned, and had an opportunity to go back and look at the master school building oversight report, the final report, which came out in 2002. And there were, the plan called for nine new schools to be built in Fall River. Actually, it was 11. We're building the ninth one right now, the New Morton Middle School. And then it called for Phase Two from 2005 to 2010. The city was to look at constructing a new downtown elementary school and a new east-end elementary school, obviously, that hasn't moved forward. Maybe it's been determined there's not a need for that at this time, I'm not sure. But Phase Three of the plan, from 2010 to 2015, called for the expansion and/or reconstruction of five schools. Those were the Tansy, Carroll, Wixson, Laurel Lake, and Belile. Obviously, the Carroll School, we've decided to decommission and use as parking for the New Morton. The Laurel Lake and Belile, we've looked at pursuing with the sale at different points. I may be filing a resolution for the next council meeting because I am concerned that the timeframe in this plan from 2010 to 2015, we were supposed to look at expansion and/or reconstruction of Tansy School. I don't know where that stands. I think that's certainly a school that could use some investment in terms of some fixing up. And also, it's my understanding, the Viveris Elementary School at this point in time is either at or near, certainly very close to, capacity. So, given that the Belile was supposed to stay open and didn't, I don't know if the school department is making a reassessment at this point in time. But I would certainly like an update at some point from the administration and school department as to the status of the third phase of the school building plan as it applies to the south end of the city and the Tansy School in particular, whether there's any additional expansion or reconstruction that it's going to be required. But all that having been said, at this time, I would second the motion to throw out all of the bids, the three remaining bids. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Pullen. Before I call on a couple of the councils, Attorney Torres, you've researched the issue. I remember we spoke last week, and thank you for appearing here tonight. So, the question to you, Counselor, is whether this committee is within its legal right to throw out the Belile bid at this time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The case law cited by the counselor comes as a result of language in the statute that gives us the right, any municipality, to reject any and all bids, both in services, goods and services, and real estate. And we actually, to eliminate any question on that, include in any RFP that we write or any invitation for bids. In the construction context, we reserve the right to reject any and all bids. And the way the standard has come down in the Commonwealth, well, they can be for any reason or for no reason at all. If you reject them, and you say you reject them in the interest of public policy, then you're covered by the law. So, they always have the right in the interest of public policy to reject bids. And it's even more so because it's a conveyance of property. Conveyance of property cannot be done without a legislative vote. So, even if there wasn't that explicit right or an implied right in 30B to do that, you still couldn't force a conveyance without the approval of the legislative body. So, you're fine.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor, very much. Counselor, and just remind the committee, we are still just on item number one, dealing with the resolution. Item number two is calls for action on the Belile School. So, we're still on number one, dealing with the resolution, but it's obviously part of the same discussion. Counselor Mitchell?
I just want to amend my motion to, in the interest of public policy, as suggested by the public. Let me get this leave to withdraw in the interest of public policy.
Second. Any other comments by this committee? Counselor Mayoza?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I signed on to this resolution with President Pereira and Counselor Mitchell because I thought it was the right thing to do. I have to commend this committee and the chair for trying to move these school properties forward. However, I think this Belile School issue has brought to light some concerns that I have about moving, bidding these schools out. There's some concerns I have in regards to the RFPs, in terms of "as-is" language, as it applies to environmental concerns. I spent some significant time speaking to an environmental attorney, and he's pretty much assured me that "as-is" language does not protect the city in the event that we have an environmental issue. President Pereira put in a resolution to ask for the Inspector General and some other individuals to come talk to the committee. Counselor Pullen put in a very good resolution, asking for the city administration for some funding to do what I think is much-needed environmental assessments. I think it helps us determine where these properties are in terms of if there's any environmental contamination, and if there's not, then we can market those properties as such. That being said, I know last, at our last meeting, I said that this process was tainted, and that's pretty strong language. And what I would say, though, I think the process has been tarnished because I think there's some things that should have happened that did not happen, and some things that should not have happened that did happen. And that's no reflection on the committee, on the Real Estate Committee. But that being said, I really believe that no more school property should go out to bid until such times we have that meeting with the Inspector General and until such times we have those monies to do the environmental studies. If I had a seat at that table tonight and I had to vote, I would vote to grant to leave to withdraw all the proposals. I thank the chair for recognizing me, and with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Mayoza. Counselor Casey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to bring out the fact that we put these schools out to bid with an RFP, and what happened in this situation, and with all the schools, we put out five schools this time, and we got bids on all five schools. The fact is, on the Belile School, we got six bids. Three of the bids did not do what the RFP requested, and three of the bidders did. To put this leave-to-withdraw on the three who did put in the bids properly and who spent money to do the work that was, needed to be done to be able to put in a bid, a proper bid, to have the environmental issues looked at. It cost all three developers or bidders to absorb. And are we sending the right message to anyone else who wants to put in a bid and put out that money ahead of time? And if this committee or this council chooses not to give it to them, they've thrown that money out the window. I think what we're doing is setting a situation up here where you might not get people who even care to put a bid on the schools. We still have quite a few bids to actually address, but I think we're sending the wrong message to the people of Fall River and beyond who might be interested in these schools. Another thing I would like to bring out is I know that it was stated about the case that was looked into on not selling the schools, but I think the fact is, if one of the parties or all three of the parties who actually put out money want to take this to court, they certainly can. And I don't think that our city should be put in that situation. And with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Casey. Before we take a vote, I would ask that Counselor Mitchell amend your motion slightly to incorporate both item one and two together in your motion.
I would amend it as such.
Okay, so could you reread the motion, Madam Clerk?
For the good of public policy.
Right, that you would, your motion is to take item number one, the resolution, and item number two, the RFPs, together and grant leave to withdraw to both in the interest of public policy.
Exactly.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please. Counselor Kamara? Yeah?
Mr. Kadeem, with the $100,000 funding for this school, the environmental studies that we're looking to do, is that something that we're looking to do or receive anytime soon, or where will that put the city?
We would have to, the council would have to actually appropriate the $100,000, but I'm assuming, and I will have the resolution before me, but I don't know if it was using the free cash. So, that would have to come before the council, before June 30th, so that the free cash can be appropriated for that amount.
But does the administration have any discussion with that regards at all? Is that something you entertain, or is something that we're not looking to entertain at this time?
I haven't had any discussions currently with the mayor about that, but originally, there was no intent to do any, put any funds aside for the 21E's.
Have you discussed it with any city council?
No, I have not.
Okay. Attorney Torres, with regard to the language "as-is," Counselor Mayoza stated earlier that he's talked to someone who said that that language won't hold up. If there's a problem, city's on the hook. Is that your understanding as well? When the city sells a property "as-is," is it similar to when you buy a car? When you buy a car "as-is," the translation, let's go the next day, you bought the car "as-is." What is the situation with the buildings?
It's a complicated situation because of Massachusetts General Law 21E and the Massachusetts contingency plan that normally looks to find out who the original PRP, the potentially responsible parties, are. There's always a liability of a present owner of property for cleanup. However, there can be a right of contribution if the present owner and DEP who's enforcing it can point out who the original polluter was, for instance, an oil tank. But the question then comes, is if in the purchase and sale agreement, you can contract around the right of contribution from the present owner, the present owner can actually assume the city's liability for a certain amount of purchase price, and then it becomes what the DEP would enforce against the city if there is a...
Even if there was an agreement?
So, if we're selling "as-is," we put an indemnification clause in the purchase and sale agreement that essentially says, if we're found liable for any cleanup because you purchased it "as-is," you'll indemnify the city. But it's really, it's a complicated matter. Normally, nine times out of 10, the original polluter can be kept on the hook as long as they have, you know, available funding to pay for it. In the case of a city, you have a right of execution against the city, so there's always city money to pay a judgment. So, it's, the present owner usually becomes responsible where someone's no longer existent, and they were the prior, they were the prior owner, they're bankrupt, so. But for the most part, under 21E, if you're found to be a potentially responsible party, then there would be a right of contribution against you for the cleanup.
You'd assume all?
But it's really, there's a lot of pieces to it, so it's not as easy as saying you're liable or you're not liable. It depends on how the purchase and sale agreement is written, indemnification clauses, contracting away liability.
Well, that's going to raise an interesting question, and should we be selling any of these schools? Because if we're going to be liable for all of them eventually, then what is the point? By what you're telling us, regardless of how the purchase and sale is written up, we still could be on the hook. If that's the case, then should we be looking to get rid of these buildings?
No, I think in the purchase and sale, you can contract for indemnification or transfer the cleanup cost to the purchaser, is what you try to do under an "as-is."
Right.
And that's why you say "as-is," you transfer the cleanup cost to them. However, if DEP were to do an enforcement action beyond the scope of that purchase and sale, and the present owner wasn't going to take their responsibility, then yes, there are going to be situations where the original owner that contributed to the environmental situation could be...
On the hook.
Potentially on the hook, yes.
So, as I said earlier, the city could be on the hook for all of these schools, potentially?
Potentially.
Depending on what DEP wants to enforce and how much they want to go after the city, if they feel that the agreement that's written up at the time doesn't specifically identify that when you buy it "as-is," you are buying it "as-is," I guess. So, I guess it is complicated, and should we be selling these buildings?
As-is with 21E and superfund sites is very, can be very complicated, and it all has to do with the indemnification. It has to do with contracting away the liability, and the...
Do you know of any situation where that's occurred, where someone has bought a property from a city and...
Not without looking at the case law. I've always seen them sold. I've always seen them sold "as-is" with a right of the, one of the things you can do is you have a, instead of us spending the money, if you have a provision in your purchase and sale agreement that says the selected bidder will have 90 days to perform its own environmental study, and then if they don't, if they're not happy with the findings, and if they don't agree to incur the cost above and beyond the purchase price, then they don't have to move forward with the transaction. Those are the typical things we do in commercial transactions, not so much municipal transactions, but it's a tool that's available to you. You allow a due diligence period for a number of things, zoning permits, which we already allow, but we haven't allowed the due diligence in the environmental area. That way, the city doesn't have to pay for the 21E, and if somebody is as interested in buying the property at the low prices that they tend to propose, then they can go ahead do their 21E and then determine if they want to take it pursuant to an "as-is" or they want to walk from the transaction. That's one way to do it.
How does it stand with the Brayton Avenue School? We sold it a couple of months ago for roughly $1,000, very inexpensive. If there's something found there, is the city going to be on the hook for that, or could that possibly...
We sold that "as-is," and again, we would try to enforce that condition.
Okay.
Sometimes it wouldn't be worth it with the cleanup cost in some, a small, a tank like that, depending on the soils. A lot of times, the cost of the litigation to the present owner would be higher than the cleanup cost, so they might be discouraged from it, and then you can always negotiate a cross-contribution with them. There's a number of ways to handle it, but it's a difficult situation with these, with selling these schools because you're looking at the carrying cost of keeping them or getting them for sale is what the market will pay, and it is. You guys have been in a difficult situation.
It's taken us so long to sell these, and now we're going to throw out all the bids after we have six people bid on them.
Yeah.
So, it is complicated. It's difficult.
Yeah.
What about if we were to spend some money doing preliminary studies or doing the environmental testing, and let's say we did Phase One, Phase Two, or depending on how deep we're going to get into this environmental testing, what if we said we've done studies, we've done testing, we've spent an awful lot of money, and then they find contamination beyond what we were able to find? Would we still be on the hook for that?
Then you have...
Because now you run the risk of spending money doing testing, and you're still...
Right. Then you're more likely to be on the hook instead of, in the preferred scenario where you put it up for sale, you have their due diligence period for environmental, they do their environmental, then they decide whether, for the price they offered you, they're going to assume that cleanup liability. So, once something like a Brayton Avenue is, or just some hypothetical school, if the cleanup on that school is $50,000 and a developer is buying it for $1,000, and the re-market value per six lots, the developer's going to make $30,000 on it, then he's, it's worth it to him to clean it up and not walk from the deal. But in other situations where the cleanup exceeds the resale and the margin, then they're not going to do it. So, I think in that case, the due diligence period will let them decide whether they walk from the transaction. Then it comes back to the city, and the city would say, well, now that they've done the 21E, we know what the 21E report requires for cleanup. We, as a city, have to decide whether we want to clean it up and then try to sell it and get above the cleanup cost for the market, which we might not want to do. We might just end up holding it. So, they're real tough decisions to make on these properties.
We might end up holding it, knowing that it is contaminated to a certain amount, and we can't sell it for less than that amount because that's what the cost is going to be.
Exactly.
So, we could actually work in...
Yeah, that's the difficulty. It's how much it's worth to someone, yeah. I'm going to hit the nail on the head, Counselor.
With that, I yield.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kamara. Good questions. Counselor Dennis?
Attorney Torres, you said something that caught my attention. I don't have the weird proposal in front of me, but my memory serves me, the clause that caused them to be, or the bid to be non-responsive was one that we just talked about. It was a 90-day clause which essentially said, we just want to go in and see how much money this may or may not cost us. If it's an amount of money we're able, willing and able to spend, then we'll, you know, we're interested, and if not, then we won't purchase. But that's the exact clause that caused them to be non-responsive. I'm not understanding. Why was that not, why did that create, why did that cause them to be non-responsive?
Because, because that came in their proposal instead of being in our RFP, Counselor. If we wanted that to be a condition of the sale, we have to put it in the RFP. A due diligence period would have to be one of our conditions of sale.
So, it would have to be for everybody?
We would have to suggest it. Right. So, when they, when we say "as-is," we're saying no due diligence, take it as it is. If we then, and the thing I was just suggesting, that we put in these in the future...
Maybe we can fix that by just putting, by putting in that they have a 90-day due diligence clause, and everybody be happy, and if they don't want to purchase it, they don't have to purchase it, they find out that the remediation is too expensive.
Right, exactly. And that language has to be in the RFP that is sent out. We can't amend it now to do that because that puts all the...
Well, we can if we go back out to bids, right?
If we go back out to bid...
Then we can amend it.
Exactly. But we can't do it for this round of six bids that are in there. But in the future, that is one way to squarely transfer the liability and also help the city determine their cleanup costs. And the good thing about, like, the Word proposal, and this should be, this should be probably indicative of the market, especially if an NGO, nonprofit can do it like Word, the market should be able to sustain developers who will come in like Word did and say, all right, give us 90 days, and we'll pay for the environmental testing, and then we'll determine whether to purchase it for the price we offered. And the good thing about that is we put one more provision in the RFP in the purchase and sale contract that says, and when you do the 21E, you turn it over to us as well. You don't get to keep that as proprietary, it becomes our document because then we can tell you how to clean up. But as I said, if a nonprofit organization like Word can suggest coming up with their own money to fund an environmental testing, that tells me that most developers out there looking at these properties can do the same thing.
Which is exactly...
So, we don't have to pay for the 21Es.
Which is exactly what they wanted to do.
Exactly. But because the way the RFP was written, and when Counselor Pullen double-checked with the IG, they were, you know, they said, okay... okay, if it says as-is, then you can't add a condition. Uh, if it was silent as to that, we probably could have added the condition.
I think I smell a very simple fix to all this, these problems by just adding some language to these RFPs that'll resolve a lot of this. Uh, it'll relieve the city from a lot of, uh, additional expense, and, uh, it'll, uh, it appears to me that, uh, then it'll satisfy the purchaser's need to determine what the remediation is, if anything, on these properties, and whether or not they're willing to incur the expense if we just simply put those two clauses in future RFPs. I think we solved the problem.
You're right, Counselor.
I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Dennis. Uh, Counselor Pullen?
Thank you. Now, I just wanted to point out that what, uh, Counselor Mayoza just said, as well as Attorney Torres, we got that advice back in September when we had Realtors and others before us. Uh, they advised us that even with the as-is language, the city might not be entirely off the hook for environmental cleanup, uh, which is why they had advised, uh, looking into the environmental issues. Now, whether or not we decide to, to do that, or it sounds like today there's different ways that we can do that, we can actually require the developer, give them a timeframe to do that rather than the city, but, um, I think that before we put, you know, if this resolution passes today to withdraw all the bids for Belial, I think before we put the Belial or any other school out for an RFP again, uh, we should have that discussion, whether it's in Committee on Finance or a special meeting, and figure out exactly what we want to do and how we want to move forward. So I wouldn't be in favor with moving forward with any other schools until we have that discussion that, uh, Counselor Pereira referred to in her, in her resolution that she put in at the last council meeting, as well as the one that I put in, which was merely trying to, uh, take hold of some of the advice that we were given back in September. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pullen. Yeah, I, I just, uh, chime in a little bit. I'm in agreement. I was going to make that, uh, same comment at the conclusion of the meeting that, uh, we will, you know, will not entertain any other request or proposals until, uh, we get a word from the administration, whether in support of your resolution, and, uh, also convening a Committee on Finance to entertain professional development with regard to the remainder of the school. So, thank you. Uh, Counselor Mitchell?
Yeah, basically, I sort of say the same thing, like, I think you were giving, say, advice, uh, unfortunately, you didn't use it, because we haven't used it before, because they basically gave us a lot of the
Microphone.
They gave us a lot of the, I think it is.
No, one of the
I can see it.
Yes. Yeah. Right. Choose this one.
They gave us a lot of the advice that, uh, we are hearing here tonight, a lot of the same solutions that we're hearing here this evening. Um, unfortunately, we, uh, and, and I'm not trying, trying to throw the Counselor under the bus, but, uh, Corporation Counsel, I wish we, we would have gotten some of this information, uh, early on because I think a lot of the, uh, unfortunate steps that we've taken, including this one, could have been avoided had we had this information, uh, early on.
You even backed the bus up?
But
Huh? I said you even backed the bus up, but continue.
But, well, let me go forward now and run it, run it back over. Uh, but the fact of the matter is, we are withdrawing these bids. Unfortunately, uh, there was a proposal early on that was the only proposal that was thrown out. I don't know what the reason it was thrown out. I wasn't on the committee at the time, but I would hope that we can go forth from here now that we've learned, uh, some of the missteps that we have taken in the past, that we can go forward in the future and get this thing done and get it done right. Because I'll tell you right now, I, one of the things that I, let me just throw this in here, though, one of the things that I think we should do, and I think Counselor Pullen touched on it, was I think we should see what the situation is on the south end relative to schools. Uh, I, I think one of the poorest decisions made was the Slade School because we used almost every single inch of that land as a footprint for a building. There's no parking down there. Uh, when school, uh, is let out and when school, when the children are going to school, it's a nightmare. It's a traffic nightmare down there. And had we had a piece of land such as the Belial School, where they put that school, if they would have built the school where the Belial School is, I, I think that we would have had parking, uh, we would have had a, a better traffic flow than we do at the, uh, at the Slade School. And as Counselor Pullen, uh, pointed out, I understand right now, the Vivera School has seven hundred and twenty-five students that attend that school. It has a capacity of eight hundred students. So we are close to maximum there, and in the near future, we may be looking for land in the south end to build a school. So it's something we should keep in, in mind as we move forward relative to the Belial School. With that, I yield.
And I, you know, and I know that's, uh, very easy information to get from the superintendent because they do enrollment projects and projections, um, year after year. So they, they do have a pretty good idea of the population in the south end and the growth within particular neighborhoods that they, they are required to keep that. Uh, anyone else, Counselor Pullen, or anybody else want to comment? Counselor Kamara?
Yeah, on that note, um, if we're going to throw these bids out, then we shouldn't sell the Belial School. We should just keep it because we might need it at some further point in time. But if we're going to throw these bids out to make it an easy fix for some people that had problems with the RFP, let's not forget that there were some people who did not have an easy, a problem with the RFPs. We had some bidders that did the due diligence because they're in the market and they know real estate, and they know what they're doing, and they do this for a living. They hired engineers. They did the study. They brought, at this table, telling us how much money they spent, invested, what their payout would be of what they saw the problem was, how would it would cost them, and what their benefits would be, and how many house lots they were going to do. So let's not seem like there's a problem with the way everything ran. It's just the problem was that some people who bid on these were not experienced in doing this type of proposals. That's what happened. It's unfortunate, but that's what happened. So if we're going to draw out the bids because we want to keep the property for future use for the fall of the city or school department, that's one thing, I'd agree with that. But if we're going to throw these bids out to request proposals a month from now to give it to an entity that everyone here said they want to give it to, then I'll say, let's just give it to them. Let's not require, throw out the proposal. Let's just give it to the, the entity that wants it, and everybody wants to give it to them. Why ask for more RFPs? If you want it to go to one individual, and everyone in this council has pretty much said we want it to go there, let's just give them the keys. Why are we going to tell other people, okay, now let's go through the RFPs again, send it out, and if somebody, if they make another mistake, okay, well, let's throw them out again? It gets a little frustrating when we've been trying to sell these, this particular school. For how long now, Arlene? How long have we been trying to sell this school? Over a year. And here we are, six people came to the table, some knew exactly what they were doing, did their due diligence, hired people, invested money, knew what they were doing, others didn't, unfortunately. And that caused a problem, all of a sudden, for the city to throw these bids out. So I, I'm not in favor of throwing them out, especially if we're going to send, put these RFPs out again. If that's the case, we all know who we want to get the building. Let's give them the keys, give them the property, and let them do what they want to do with that. Other than that, I wouldn't throw them out to bid. With that, I yield. Roll call. Vote.
Counselor Pullen?
I just have to comment. I don't know if I agree entirely with that characterization or that it's a fair characterization. I think the way forward is pretty clear. I think there's a number of reasons which people have stated at this meeting and at previous meetings to throw out all these bids and, and start o, and start over. And, and starting over could mean that we do hang on to this property for school department use. I'd like to hear from the school department first, um, as to whether or not it would make sense. As I said, in the original school building plan, Belial was envisioned to be closed. I think the previous superintendent made a decision to close Belial based on some work there that was needed on roofs and boilers that maybe they didn't want to pay for at the time. But now with the enrollment of Vivera nearing capacity, um, I don't know what the future projection numbers are in terms of if they think it's going to be close to capacity in the near future, but there's a number of questions, uh, to be answered. I don't think it's a slam dunk that Belial, uh, or, or any of these other schools get pu, put back out to bid anytime soon because I think we do need to have a conversation, uh, if we can get the IG's office down here, not only with them, but we need to have a conversation with the administration, uh, with Corporation Council, with others, if it makes sense to, uh, for the city to do environmental assessments at Belial and other schools that are on the list to sell, if it makes sense instead to include in an RFP that the developer, whoever bids, would have to do the, uh, the environmental cleanup within a certain number of, of days. Uh, so I think there's a lot more to discuss. I don't think putting any schools out to bid again, uh, is a foregone, uh, conclusion. I think there's a lot more that I'd like to hear before putting the Belial or any more schools out to bid. I want to make sure whatever we do from this point forward, we're not in a situation again, whether we have, where we have to throw out bids because of confusion in the process.